Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lundey?
Our inspirational word for the day is, "It is far better to do a few things well than to undertake many good works and leave them half-done."
That's been my philosophy.
It's already attached to you.
Our featured dog today is a three-year-old pit mix. He was found in Alariah. He's actually available for adoption today. He's got a great personality. He's in cage number nine. He's a quite direct fit. We've got 27 total dogs available, so stop by the kennel and see him.
I think it's a female, isn't it?
Oh, female.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, before we start the meeting today, members of the Sheriff's Department here give us an update on the fleet, so if we could start off that way.
Good morning Commissioners, Ms. Upton, Mr. Cordez, Ms. Rennis. Lieutenant Daniel Ashdown with Lorraine County Sheriff's Office. I'm Director of Law Enforcement. With me today, I have Grant Coban Nelson, our Vehicle Maintenance Coordinator. As it comes up every year, we have to purchase new vehicles, so we've put together a small PowerPoint to kind of show an overview of where we're at, at this point in time. So with your permission, we are ready to present the PowerPoint.
Wonderful, thank you.
On the first screen, this is just like an overview of some of the vehicles that we have right now. We're currently running Chevy Caprices, Chevy Tahoe, Crown Vics, which were phased out by Ford in 2011, but we still have some of those in our fleet. And then our newest one on the far end, to the left, is the Ford Police Utility Interceptors that we just purchased last year. We're just now getting them up and putting in the fleet.
What kind is that?
Ford Police Interceptor Utility. It's basically a Ford Explorer that Ford has made to try and endure the rigors of police use. Next slide. This is kind of a quick thing that I try and do when we talk to Citizens Academy, to try and get people maybe realize just how many miles we drive a year. The circumference of Earth at the equator is 24,901. In one year, our fleet has, the entire fleet for Sheriff's Office, went 1.4 million miles. Divide that by 12, you get about 116,000 miles a month for our fleet to drive. That's like encircling Earth, 4.7 times in one month, just for our fleet. So that's kind of puts in perspective how many miles the Sheriff's Office drives just in a month. With that...
That's a good trivia question.
One of the ways that we've been able to maintain our fleet and keep it running well is with our Support Car Program. One of the benefits to the Support Car Program is that a car will usually average us eight to 10 years on a good run. If those cars were in fleet use, we'd be replacing them every four years. Last year, also a benefit to the public with the use of these Support Cars was we gained over 6,200 hours of patrol time as these deputies were going to and from work. That gave them the ability to respond to over 670 calls for service. If we didn't have that Support Car Program, one, our time to respond would have increased greatly, and it would have also cost the office overtime. These are hours that are donated as a benefit to having those cars because the guys are driving on their way into work and driving home without pay, but they still agree that they answer to these calls. Those included everything from criminal arrests, in-progress calls, burglaries, domestics, alarms. When we have prisoners in hospitals, it allows us to send them direct to and from the hospital to alleviate that overtime need. Another benefit of the Support Car Program is we don't have all our eggs in one basket. Our fleet is spread out throughout the county, so if there was a flood or a disaster, we're not wiping out our entire fleet because it's parked in one location. Another important part of our fleet is our auxiliary deputies. These guys and girls are invaluable to us. Last year, they volunteered over 17,000 hours of service to us, which equates to about eight and a half full-time positions if they were to be working for pay. Of that, 7,500 hours were in events that required the use of vehicles, be it traffic control, scene security at arson's or crime scenes. They help out with our other community events, the fair, community festivals, child ID. And in order to maintain that, we do maintain three marked patrol units for them and a transport van so that they can take groups of people to the sites where they're doing these details.
We'll talk a little about the replacement guidelines that we go by on the vehicles. Every year, I attend Police Fleet Managers Expo. It's been around different places across the country. We've learned a lot from there. We have what they call networking sessions with other departments and about the same-sized vehicles that we have, and we all talk about, you know, when we get rid of vehicles and how we see the trend of when a vehicle is starting to get expensive to fix and maintain and beyond their lifecycle, I guess you want to say. I've used that as a resource. I've used Government Fleet as a magazine. I've used them as a resource a lot for trying to learn and to better our fleet. And a Government Fleet website I did find is a chart, and it adds numbers up to the vehicles. Say you take a 2011 vehicle, so right off the bat, if it's 2017, you add six points for the years. It goes down to talk about if it's a fleet car or an admin pool car, it'll only get one point. But if it's a police car, right away, it's five points. So it's a point system. As you can go down, you can see it talks about the points. Zero to 17 points, the car would accumulate, it's, the car's in excellent shape. It goes down, you know, good is 18 to 22, reevaluating a year. 23 to 27, it's satisfactory, and 28-plus is poor. On the next slide, we went over our fleet now. Our fleet totals are 83 cars, but our fleet road patrol we have is 44. They make up 53% of our fleet. Marked road patrol cars are the ones that you see out with the lights and sirens and the decals and such on. They make up the majority of the fleet, they do the majority of the driving. Currently, right now, we have... Yeah, we have 65 that are in good shape. Then again, that's the total fleet as saying we have lots of specialty vehicles that are all included in that. And then we go on to nine cars that are in the good area that by next year, we may have to reevaluate them, but we have five and four that are basically this year saying we should be, should be replaced. And then replacement guidelines by mileage, and again, like I said, we talked to the people at this Police Fleet Expo, I researched. The guidelines, you can see the national average is about 100,000 miles when you're coming to replace some police vehicles. Michigan State Police does it at 70,000. We're rated 160,000. We'll drive the cars up until there, and then at that point, that's when they start getting really expensive. They're in the shop two, three times a month, just a lot of little stuff, or transmissions, big stuff like that. They get expensive to maintain and unsafe for the officer, undependable, because if you have an officer running to a hot call and something happens to it, he doesn't make it to the call, it doesn't help the public. Let's talk about current fleet mileage. Let me say we have 67 vehicles that are under 100,000 miles. We have seven that are under 100,000 plus, between 100 and 140,000, five and 140,000 plus, and then we have five at 160,000 plus and four at 140,000. So when we talk about vehicle replacement, we're right into that, and then this year, we're saying we probably could use nine cars this year. If you go by the guidelines and such, and say next year, we're looking at where, again, about every year, it's looking like about nine cars a year is getting into that replacement cycle.
Is there any questions? The average cost of a vehicle, just so you can tell the public, when you have them outfitted and put on the...
The average cost of a fully outfitted vehicle is about $38,000. That is lights, sirens, decals. We put cameras in every car now. That is MDT computer system, a radar unit, that shotgun rifle mount, and front and rear cages, because utilities take two cages now. That is completely outfitted, ready to go.
So the public asks, because we've done eight this year?
We did eight, yeah, last year. We were looking for, I think we were talking about maybe five this year.
Right, correct, yeah. So we had eight and all that, so we said when we pass the sales tax, we're going to work on getting new vehicles and working on the jail, and we've done that, moved it forward.
Tell us about the Ford Explorer. I know there was some concern when that first came out about fumes in the vehicle. Has that whole issue been addressed?
Yes, when I attended, again, my attended Police Fleet Expo, that was kind of right around the time that hit the press. And Ford came out with their new vehicle, they always have a ride and drive event. At the ride and drive event, pretty much we all noticed right away, the tailpipes are different on a Ford Explorer's. So the Explorers that we currently have, once they're, when they're done and outfitted, we take them over to Ford, to the dealer, they inspect them, they put on different tailpipes, and then they reprogram the computer for the air conditioning system. And what that does is in a pursuit situation, when you're running wide-open throttle, it'll technical, it'll dump more air into the cabin and try and flush some exhaust stuff out. But it has been taken care of, so that's not an issue anymore. I know some departments were talking about putting CO detectors in their cars. At Police Fleet Expo, I learned that at that time, the CO detectors, they degrade in sun and heat, so we decided not to even go that route. But then now, since Ford is taking care of it, we're very comfortable that we're not going to have any kind of problems there. I talked to a fleet manager from Columbus. He has 300 units, they never had any problems. A lot of it, I think, was poor outfit, more than anything.
Are these, do we try to make sure that they're all-wheel drive, four-wheel drive? The Explorer, I thought I'd heard about one department that had bought some vehicles, but then they had to park them in the winter because they weren't performing well on the road.
The Explorers are all-wheel drive. It's a no-cost option to opt out for the front-wheel drive only, which would be kind of silly to do that. So our Explorers are all-wheel drive, yeah.
Have they performed well?
So far, yeah, yeah.
And the Tahos, I'm assuming, also?
Yes, yeah. Everything, the manufacturers do a real good job at trying to make changes to the cars to make them better for the police officers. If you were to get in the seat of a Ford Explorer that we have, it really wouldn't be comfortable for you because you don't have a belt on. They make the seat, they cut the seat out and stuff, for when the belt's on, it's not pushing her back. Your cars have lumbar supports, it's already pushing. So if they left that seat in a police car, it would be really uncomfortable for an officer for eight hours a day. So they'd have stepped up the program, made the car a little more comfortable and stuff for the officers and deputies.
So it's just a rumor out there that Ford was possibly going to bring back the Crown Vic? That was just a rumor?
That was just a rumor.
Okay.
Yeah, they have no intentions. When it comes to manufacturing vehicles, again, for them to, the Crown Vic went away because it would not pass 2012 roof crush standards, so they'd have to, would have to completely redesign the vehicle and then redesign the whole plant and everything else around that, and that's just too much money, just for a niche market. And that's kind of why the Caprice has gone away. Chevrolet has pulled all production out of Australia, so again, that left them basically without a semi-plant for the Caprice, so they just eliminated that and just concentrating on the Tahoe now.
I see some departments using the Taurus. Any thoughts on the Taurus?
The Taurus is, in a detective version, they're good.
Just asking for your professional opinion, you're around these things all the time.
The Taurus, I mean, it's the same platform as the utilities, okay? They're the same drive, train, anything. But the issue with the Taurus is when you put cages and stuff in them, visibility out the back becomes very limited, and room in the backseat and room in them is very limited for what our guys need to do on a day-to-day basis. So that's why we kind of steer away from the Taurus's for road patrol use only.
Well, I know that, you know, we take this very seriously, want to make sure that you're safe and, you know, that you're home away from home, you're working office, literally, and so that you can actually respond. I know it was quite upsetting in the community when one of the departments, you know, was having a pursuit and a couple cars broke down. You never want to have that happen, and that's unfortunate. That may have also played a major role in the public realizing the severity of the financial situation of the city at the time, but just, that's something that we, you know, we take very seriously. I think some folks don't realize there was a period of time where we were taking, what, road signs and securing the floorboards?
Yes.
Maybe you can tell us a little bit about those days?
I had one car that had, if you put it on a lift, it actually said mechanic's only in this area. It was a sign that had lain around the shop. Yeah, it happens. When I started here in 2003, they had just started buying a lot of the new cars, they were getting like 10 a year. Previous to that, they were buying the used State Patrol cars, and they already had 80, 90,000 miles on them, and then it was just like saying money. Once you buy a new car, you know, it's a lot easier to maintain, a lot safer for the officer. Like I say, I'm also a driving instructor for them, and I always tell them, if you can't get to the scene, you don't get there, you become part of the problem, not part of the solution. So again, making sure the cars can get there is what we mean to do and keep the officers safe.
Okay, great. I just think it's important for the public to know, you know, how capital-intensive, you know, running a department like yours is to keep vehicles running, and it's, you know, it's ungodly expensive just for any family to keep a couple vehicles running in the family, but to keep a whole department running is a tremendous challenge.
I don't think I realized that the officers responding to calls from home, that they weren't on the clock at that point. So they're, they're doing that voluntarily because they take the car home?
Correct. That's one of the agreements as part of the Support Car Program, that they donate 15 minutes before and after their shift. That's not to say there's some deputies that live 20, 30 minutes from home and will start heading to a call and never put in the overtime. So we do get a lot of benefit from that program.
Wonderful. Good job, guys.
Yeah, really nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Preparations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kahlo. I do have a number of potential hires I'd like to discuss with the board this morning. Record Center, Collection Center, possibly Maintenance, Workforce Development. I'm going to go over some applications, would you update on negotiations? And, excuse me, I'm still working on the sale of real estate I want to discuss with you, an impending legal matter. All of those issues are allowed under Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and discuss those matters that have outline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved only the reading on the minutes of January 17?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Prepayment for victims of domestic violence fund to Lorraine County Safe Harbor, Eaton DVA Genessus House for the amount of $28,940.74, as collected by Lorraine County 5th period July 1st through December 31st, 2017. Collection and payment are pursuant to ORC Sections 230, 3.201, and 311, 3.34 through 39.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized payment of $1,000 wires, blowing in Jerre Funeral Chapel, Alariah for Injun Valen Glenn C. Miller, remaining in accordance with the ORC 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
It's only the third meeting of the year. We'll get through training, guys. We'll have another session this afternoon.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Community Development Amendment Resolution 08374, creating incentive district in the unincorporated territories of Lorraine County, and authorized related action pursuant to ORC 5909.77 through 81, and 5709.85 Eaton Estates.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I was going to ask, do we need, Don, you want to give an update on this? Don Romancer from our Community Development Department?
Good morning and thank you, Board. This is a continuation outcome of a public hearing that we held last year. This is to allow for the reimbursement to the developer of out in Eaton Township that installed a turning lane on State Route 57 as part of his development and also provided some other public rights of way to the public. Originally, this program or project had started back just before the economy had tanked, when the TIF was originally entered into. There was an expectation that the developer would be able to move through events beyond anyone's control. This development has taken much longer than would have been imagined. The way the TIF is designed, once the developer is repaid, we would go ahead and cut off the TIF, and everyone, all of the real estate taxes being collected then would be distributed to the local governments, especially the schools. And then we did have a brief conversation, Mr. Cordez and I, with the school district. They called us last week just to make sure they understood what was going on.
We gave them an ample amount of time. They had some reasons for not responding promptly to our notice. This is a 1075. Actually, we only have to serve notice. The board owns the 1075. No cooperation from the school district is required, but we always seek agreement, at least in understanding from the school district. There's no sense making ill will on these things, so we, that's why we pushed it back on the agenda. We had discussed this several weeks ago.
Yes.
This is just housekeeping from what we did at the beginning of the year, and they were satisfied with where we were going and that this was just a housekeeping issue because the original TIF didn't meet its purpose and that this would sunset as soon as we collected enough money to complete the turning lane. They were fairly agreeable. We got to meet a new controller?
A new treasurer.
Treasurer?
They just had, you know...
So there, it was, it was, gave us an opportunity to introduce ourselves to each other and have conversation for our future work together, so I think everything was satisfied, and I was happy the way the conversation all went.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance from Chip Burmier 16 Home Repair and Private Rehab, which includes contingencies for any unforeseen change orders, and being most responsive, complying with specifications. One, Green Home Solutions Cleveland, an amount of $6,380 for Frank D. Costa, Sr., at 10480 Greenview Avenue, Columbia Station, for home repair. KMU Trucking and Excavating, Inc., Averon, an amount of $15,950 for Kelly A. Redinger at 42799 Haven Drive, Alariah Township, for septic. Jen Met Construction Lane, an amount of $47,395 for Michael Morgan at 66 Rosa Street, Kipton, for home repair.
So moved.
Second.
How does that song go, "Two Out of Three" in bed or something like that? At least we got two of them this time here in Lorraine County. We continue to work to try to keep this work here. A lot of invitations went out, but we're still not seeing 100% of the work going to Lorraine County companies, and we're going to keep trying. I want to keep talking about that here. I know word of mouth gets out there. When you send out 10, 15, 20 invitations, and we still not successful at keeping the work home, it's a little bit discouraging. But this is better results than the last round we saw, so I'm a little bit happier than I was the last time we awarded these contracts.
I'm actually working on a company to add to our list of people to send to. It's a female business owner who has a construction company, and she's supposed to be sending me her information this week, so...
Perfect. Appreciate you doing that, thank you.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Job and family authorized purchase service agreement for Dyna County Shelter Industries, DVA Windfall Industries, Wadsworth, Ohio, an amount of $224,657.93 to provide a work experience program for supplemental nutrition assistance program recipients and OWF clients in fiscal year 18, effective February 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2018, and authorized director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, per request.
So moved.
Second.
Can we, have a little discussion on this?
Yeah. It's all Jeff King's factor.
He is, and I'd like to ask him to talk a little bit on this. This is a really good cooperative that we did with the Port Authority. We built out a facility within, within the larger facility we have on Abbey Road to provide an area for this work experience. It's a great collaborative. We were able to gain a suitable work area under this and get the build, so we have that. And the ROI was, has been completed on that, and it brings a little bit of profit into the Port Authority while the same time provides a cost-effective means to gain the work requirement under the regulations. And Mr. King is here, and I'm sure he'll give you more information on that. Really, it's really one of those areas where multiple levels of government and the private sector came together to leverage dollars for the betterment of the community.
This contract has been extended to include food stamp clients also. Prior to that, we had OWF clients, and we could serve them in our building on North Ridge Road. Because the state wants participation rates for food stamps, we had to increase the building, and we've gone out there, they made some changes. They put in some lavatory things, walls, all kinds of things. It's worked out real well. The contract lapsed because, because, I can't think right now, because I was late doing it, and we had some miscommunication with the provider. The provider does a very good job, they're from the Akron area. It's a very valuable service for our agency, keeps us compliant with our participation rates.
Bill, Jeff, would you, for a moment, just talk about, and a lot of folks don't understand that there is requirements for receiving benefits to job and family services, not on all of the assistance that's gained through the agency, but can you speak just a tiny bit to this program and what they have to do to maintain eligibility? Because there is a work component, and I think it's important that people know that.
Certain cases, depending on the caseload, how many in the family, income, whatever, have to do work, or education component. They may be qualified to do up to 20 to 30 hours per week in either or. We have other programs where we have English as a second language that fulfills some obligations. We have some work programs. I think over 50% of our clients participate in some aspect of this, training or schooling.
Right, and if they're, and schooling, continued education, so that they, they can gain meaningful employment or develop an occupation will count as a work component. So it's a work component or an education component, so they can continue to achieve a benefit level. And this program provides the work element, and you have other contracts that provide the educational component.
Correct, yes.
So it's really, it's, you know, sometimes folks don't understand this. They think they drive over there, they put their hand out, they, we put a check in their hand and they leave until the next month. It's really a much more complicated system. There's a lot of fine people that need a hand up. Obviously, there's always folks that try to abuse systems in certain places that you're going to have, but there's people that just want to get a better life, and they just need a little bit of help, and these programs are designed to do that. Now, this company out of Medina, what they do is they seek work that can be done over at the center over there, and so these folks do meaningful work there, and the company has contracts. But similar to some of the work that's done in our Voak Center over on Mary Ridge Road, they get contracts and they do certain work elements, and the company's been a good partner for quite a while.
They've been very good, yes, and they're kind of getting money from both sides. They get money from their clients, and they get money from us for providing client services And they get money from us for providing client services for our clients, so I wish I would've thought of that.
Yeah, we, yeah, well, it's, it's pretty good bit, line of business, but we were also able to build out the facility.
Right.
And gain, gain a, a resource by building out that, that facility, so I'm pretty happy with that. But I thought it was important that we speak to that because most folks don't understand the, the educational work component to maintain eligibility for some of these benefits.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Sure, see you later.
Mr. Kayla.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Miss Kowski.
Hi.
Sanitary established county system fee of nine dollars per month per residential unit for properties on Hawk Road, Columbia Township. They elect to connect into the local sewer according to the sanitary sewer service agreement authorized by Resolution sixteen to nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We're gonna discuss this with Neil Fort, the nine dollar per month stormwater district fee.
This is not the stormwater commissioner, this is sanitary fee.
Oh, this is sanitary, okay.
The, the, what, what this is, is we, we entered into that agreement with Walco.
Correct.
To allow those folks on Hawk Road that may desire to utilize a sewer that's in Eaton Township. So let me reel back a second so that anybody that is not familiar with the area, issue doesn't get confused. The, the service area ends at the township border. Township border happens to run right down the middle of Hawk Road. So the sewer is on the west side of Hawk Road, which is Eaton Township. The east side of Hawk Road is Columbia Township, which is not in Walco. It's a forced main sewer with grinder pumps on the east side. Well, there's some folks on the, there supposedly was some folks on the west side, excuse me, on the east side of Hawk Road that, that wanted to tie into the sewer on the east side of Walco. Well, we got into a big dust-up with Walco. They wanted to actually have the whole east side of Columbia, Hawk Road, Columbia Township in Walco, which had voted itself out of Walco some time ago. And we surveyed the residents, there seemed to be some interest and in a spirit of cooperation by the Board of Commissioners, we, we attempted to allow access to that sewer for those residents that may want to have that. The, the, and rather than wholesaling, changing the whole facility's planning area and then mandating that every resident would have to tie into that sewer at some great cost, quite frankly, and plus it's a forced main and you understand the problems that exist with a forced main, grinder pumps and so forth. To date, we've only had two applications to tie into that, to that sewer and I will tell you that both of them have been new builds. I'm not surprised that the new builds are asking. I would too, if I had access to a sewer even with a, with a forced main and a grinder pump system, why put in an in-ground system in when you can go into that? It's about the same cost and the long-term benefits even on a forced main outweigh an onsite system, at least of all the, the amount of land you need for the, for the onsite. But no current, you, residents have, as of the last couple of years, access to tie into that sewer. And that's exactly what we suspected all along, when we were being told that all these people were just dying and waiting to tie into that Walco sewer. So I think we did a really good job protecting the residents there that would've been mandated as soon as that facility's planning area was changed because they were within two hundred feet of that sewer, been mandated to tie into that sewer.
So the Health Department can't force them because they're not in the right planning area?
They're not in the facility's planning area.
We actually had a long discussion, they kinda chuckled it in a whack-a-mill. We didn't argue about changing some, you know, singular FPAs for these people to go on.
And, and we're doing it individually and if, if a, a current resident has an issue and they wanna tie in, we'll do an individual agreement with them and we individually agree to change that piece into the, into the planning area. Over the next ten or fifteen years, as systems fail or need upgrading or people change their mind, we'll be very agreeable to incorporating them into that facility's planning area at a piece at a time. But that protects the integrity of the property and the residents to make their choice and pick what's most beneficial to them. But I believe that over time, that'll all be into the facility's planning area because the best choice over time will be to tie into that sewer. But we just could not wholesale abandon those residents, especially since they all had chosen previously not to be in, in the Walco system. We wanna get along with, with Walco out there, but we also wanna protect the rights of the residents out there. I think we, we did a good thing and, and so those two properties that have tied in with the new buildings, and I've been actively involved with both property owners, the, we have to collect, we have to, we have to build them and then we, we forward the money on to Walco and so we have some fees that we have to pick up. The nine dollar fee is similar to any sewer district that is collecting funds and then forwarding the funds on to a different treatment operator. We made sure that we sampled those around us so that the fee was similar and nobody could complain that we just arbitrarily established that fee.
Wonderful. Better just to have a flow agreement, huh?
Well, Commissioner, you understood it was, it was.
I know. We went through a lot on it.
We went through a lot there, but, but if we had, if we had just changed that facility's planning border, then all of those residents probably would've, well, they would've been upset with us. I think the, I think that our position, while we got, better working on you, scaved and, and yelled at and beat up by a lot of folks over it, the numbers proved that we were correct.
Right.
It's been almost, what, two years, three years now?
Yep, about three years, I would guess, since our first approach.
And you can see that what, what we were told was gonna happen just didn't happen. The droves of people just weren't there. But that doesn't mean that over time, that this isn't a, this isn't a good thing. Over time, it will occur, but it just didn't happen the way everybody else said it was going to.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Miss Kowski.
Hi.
Health District, intern agreeing with Lorraine County Public Health to occupy building at nine eighty-eight O. Murray Ridge Road, Alere.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Does anybody wanna, it's kind of a unique issue with, with the Health Department. You know, we've been housing the Health Department for quite, quite a number of decades. They, they're working in collaboration with us to maintain their current location, but the facility is very dated. They've out, they outgrew that facility before they consolidated their, the Health Departments in Lorraine County. And now with the consolidation, there's no way they fit in that, that building over there. Their moving out of the Murray Ridge site was a problem. What community did they go to? You've been faced with that before with moving a department. Not, another problem was what do we do with another outdated building that we don't have a need for? So we worked with them on staying at Murray Ridge, demo, eventually to build a new building there, demo the, the building onsite, clean that site for our campus, for lack of another term, at Murray Ridge. We have a lot of facilities there. The DD's there, the DD School's there, the jail's there, detention homes there. And we'd like to have dialogue later this year with finally getting the old stepping stone down and cleaning that area back in there. Some years ago, we partnered with the City of Alere and donated land for the water tower there to, and to improve the water pressure over in that area. I'm not sure you realize that, but we, that was our land. They were having a problem with every farmers over there with the land, so we worked with Alere and we donated land for the water tower over there to help that area.
That was before us.
Excuse me?
That was way before ten I got here.
It was. Well, the county's always been willing to work with, with, with the city to get things done. We needed a water tower and so that's, so that's what we did. This'll be another good project there to kinda clean that whole streetscape along Murray Ridge. So we wanted to continue our partnership. We provide certain utilities to them and certain maintenance supports to them and, and in order to continue that collaboration, this just explains what we'll continue to do for them if they put their facility out on Murray Ridge. Working with Dave Colville's been, 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 it's been a pleasure. We, we sit down, we talk about things. He's a hard, a hard negotiator. I give him credit for what he does and of course, you know, bringing the two Health Departments together was no easy chore. They're working on the building now. We're, we're deep into what they're going to do, but they're gonna build something out there that's gonna last for the next fifty to eighty years, that's gonna be their home. I think it's a good place for them. They're in the middle of the county to serve the entire community. And all costs are, are not huge to maintain our partnership with them and I think intergovernment partnerships need to be maintained so that we all work well together.
Agreed.
Mr. Kayla.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Miss Kowski.
Hi.
Engineer, proven intern agreeing with GSI, Inc., in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred for ongoing engineer inspection and materials testing fees necessary to complete the construction of Barrington Park subdivision eight, Eaton Township, paid from the MVGT account and reimbursed by the subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Miss Kowski.
Hi.
Proven intern of subdivision, agreeing with North Grafton Realty LLC, Robert Eos, subdivision for Barrington Park subdivision number eight, Eaton Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Miss Kowski.
Hi.
Proven intern professional surveying services contract with Raftner A. Limited in the amount of forty thousand to assist with professional surveying services associated with roads, bridges and ditches to be paid from the engineer project account and authorized engineer to execute, have, for the prosecution, for those two forms.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Miss Kowski.
Hi.
Sheriff authorized release of all claims in agreement to identify solo chef of K-9 Pete to Deputy Jason Sebag for a dollar. K-9 Pete, K-9 Pete will retire due to his age and health condition.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Miss Kowski.
Hi.
Mr. Cortez?
I have no further comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Anis?
I do have two, two issues of pending litigation that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners and Executives List.
Commissioner's report. Well, Thursday, we had our first land bank meeting of the year. We began the land bank in two thousand and thirteen and from then till now, Lorraine County has acquired over ten and a half million dollars from the federal and state to fund the demolition and site restoration of five hundred and fifty vacant and abandoned homes, houses that were going to cause brightening neighborhoods and throughout the county. So doing a really good job there and by the end of the year, we should be around six hundred and fifty units that have been taken care of. Friday, Commissioner Lundey and I attended Mayor Gillock's State of the City address in North Ridgeville and he had a really nice turnout, nice lunch there. Then Monday, we attended the Community Foundation hosting the philanthropic community coalition who's working on ending the opioid epidemic. There's going to be an event this Thursday for anyone interested in attending. It's going to be from four-thirty to six o'clock at Lorraine County Community College in the Spitzer Conference Center, so anybody interested in finding out more about that is welcome to attend. Thursday evening, I went to Church of the Open Door. They had their third event to discuss the opioid epidemic. Judge John Moraldi was in attendance and he was the main speaker and he talked about the recovery court he runs, which has been very successful, and he did a great job describing what he's encountered in his court and how hard his recovery team works to get people back in their recovery and being able to be functioning members of our society. So great job to Judge Moraldi and actually that church, I hadn't been there for a while and it is amazing. They redid it, looks, doesn't even look anything like it did years ago, few years ago. It's really beautiful. And then I was nominated to be the honorary chairman for the Harvest for Hunger campaign, which is going to be kicking off on February thirteenth, so I'm excited about that. We're gonna look to do some things throughout the county, maybe collect some non-perishable food items and try to raise some money for Harvest for Hunger, so I'll let you know what some of those things will be as time moves forward. End of my report.
Wonderful. Before I start my report, condolences to the Al Pensis family. Al used to come to our meetings for the last three or four years.
Oh, gosh.
Little gentleman who sat in back. Yeah, I was reading the old bits this morning. I saw that Al passed away. He was a member of the Tea Party, but he was always very kind and he was very polite and.
Yes, he was.
He was here just overseeing what we were doing, making sure we knew what we were supposed to be doing, so condolences.
He never complained about us, ever.
No, very nice gentleman. So I just, he said, I never knew his name until I saw the picture this morning.
I knew it.
And I went, that's him, so condolences to his family. Very nice gentleman, sorry for your loss.
Yes.
Again, the land bank meeting, we can't forget to talk about the prosecutor's office has been able to collect over fifteen million dollars in back taxes over the years in aligning with also, you know, the demolitions we've done is also collecting the people who haven't paid their taxes and eighty percent plus of that dollars goes back to our local schools, so.
Right.
Good job by the prosecutor's office and the treasurer's office. While they were at Mayor Gillock's meeting, I was in Columbus for the County Commissioners Association. We had our organizational meeting and Dan Troy's our new president. Man, he can make a meeting go on and on and on and on.
Never boring.
Never boring, but a lot of discussion about our upcoming legislative priorities and putting them together, especially in regards to there'll be a new administration next year and getting our white papers and our final products out to the candidates who are running for office. Also, I was at a, last night, Cordray Sutton Training Meeting, ticket of Rich Cordray and Betty Sutton running on the Democrat's side. If anyone's interested, I also have a petition that can be filled out for their nomination, so I've got that also. Just a busy week, met with the judges yesterday in regards to some rules. There's some ongoing changes at the state level in regards to bail bonds being given and how they have to do it and who has to handle that moving forward, whereas PSI does it for the Court of Common Pleas, the county courts are gonna have to apply some, so we're talking about how that's going to work mechanically. So everything's moving forward with them, so I mean, congratulations, former Carlisle trustee, Bob White.
Oh, yeah.
Gonna be the new municipal court judge of Alere, replacing Lisa Lot Gray. That's the end of my report, huh?
Love good stuff.
Yeah, a lot of things going on. I mean, I was talking to people yesterday, everything I go in, the train station, nine-one-one, drug task force, courthouse, just a multitude of things. We got the comments in on the transportation study that went out, that Pam shared with us, I'm sure we'll get out.
Well, my clone's over in my office right now dealing with most of those things.
What's that?
His clone.
Your clone? Okay.
I cloned yesterday and he cloned himself.
Man, there you go. All right.
Exactly.
Maybe a younger model, more efficient. He's slowing down in his old age.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
End of my report.
I'd like to start first by sending out sympathies to the Williams family, went over to Oberlin for the viewing of Shirley Williams, the wife of former trustee Dick Williams. Just a really nice family, always enjoyed talking with Dick. I know we used to get together every once in a while for lunch just to kinda chat about what was going on in the county and just a really, really nice family. Also, we continue to move forward with our successful land bank program, always looking at ways that we can do things more effectively and efficiently. I thought it was a very productive meeting that we held. The Township Association wanted to congratulate, Don Romancik did a great job of presenting to the trustees there all the ways in which we stand ready and willing to always work with the township trustees and just wanna commend Don on the, the great job that he did there. Mayor Dave Gillock, State of the City, very well attended.
I'm fine. Thank you for giving me.
Yeah, it was a little hard, yeah. It's in the new academic center, which is back behind where the, the new middle school and the high school is and, and I always have a tendency of going to the old Board of Education offices where they always held the luncheon all those years and I did it where they always held the luncheon all those years, and I did it again. On Friday, I pulled in the parking lot, no one's there.
I did the same thing.
I'm like, wrong place, so, but it was a really nice event, and, you know, the mayor was commenting about that, the new, what am I forgetting the name, the circle that we put in?
Roundabout.
A roundabout, of course, the roundabout.
That's the first time I got to use it.
Oh, the first time you had a chance to use it?
Yeah, I hadn't been over that way. I got to use it on the way back from that event.
He was commenting about all the, all the critics who said, this is never going to work, never going to work, and he said, now he's got all kinds of converts calling him and writing him and thanking him for putting it in, and, you know, we really enjoyed working in partnership with county engineer and, you know, bringing some resources to the table on that project, and, yeah, I go through that roundabout a lot, and I used to dread going through that intersection, and now it's just as smooth as can be.
Yeah.
Attended the Lorraine NAACP Annual MLK Program, which was held on Sunday in downtown Lorraine. I had the chance to hear some words from the new school CEO, David Hardy. The Nord Family Foundation had an opportunity for some of the community leaders to get an early look at the economic impact of the opioid epidemic. I would strongly encourage members of the media and members of the community to be in attendance for that Thursday night, tomorrow night, it's, yeah, 4:30 to 6, right? Over at Spitzer. An extensive study. This is a big, challenging issue for our community, and Nord Family Foundation is very committed to working together in partnership with others to, to battle this issue.
Do you remember what they said for the state of Ohio, the cost it was for the opioid epidemic is the same amount that they spent in public education?
Right, exactly, yeah.
In the past, not that much the last 10 years, though. Regardless of what they spent on public education.
I'm just saying, it's a lot.
Yeah, yeah. It's, yeah, the impact, I think it was like 6.6 billion, public education's generally